June 3rd awarding of the United States of America. Control the Republic, the richest states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being broadcast by McCam and recorded by McCam and Horizon. Unanticipated. Do any of the board members have anything to run anticipated? No? Anybody from the audience? Okay, on to announcements and recognitions. Chair has one. And that is that we will be starting to do hydrant flow tests on Thursday, June 6th, starting at 7:00 PM. This will be in the central and north sectors of town. They're going to be opening, doing the three hydrants at a time to do the pitot test.
Got me.
Okay, so there may be some discoloration in your water. Persons who experience this should flush their water system by opening a cold water faucet for a few minutes, waiting about an hour. If the water is still not clear, they should repeat the flushing process. The effort we've made to keep any inconvenience to the user at a minimum, your understanding and cooperation is greatly appreciated. To my fellow board members?
I'm announcing.
That is a shot.
Yeah. I was speaking with Judy Vigil Acosta over the weekend, and she was telling me about the job care results over the last two weeks. There were 52 companies and organizations present. There were 194 job applicants, 15 veterans, and 44 middle borough job seekers. And they think that they got, that there are few job seekers because of the large amount of individuals that got unemployment between now and October and 2012. They were, in October 2012, there were 486 looking for employment in only 33 companies. So the numbers certainly seem to support that things are working. So thank you to Middleborough Unmowed for supporting those.
Other board members? Any other announcements? The announcements for the public?
Mr. McKenna.
Oh, Mr. Nolda, I'm sorry.
Yes, I just had two. On Saturday, the Friends of Massasoit State Park had their first cleanup day. Chuck Colwalker, a middle borough resident, organized that. About 60 people were able to come during the morning. It was an extremely hot day, but people were very motivated to get out there, and we did a lot of cleanup. Representative Keiko Oral was able to attend. We had Councilman Dave Potier from Taunton there, and it was just a great time. There will be another one toward the end of the summer that they'll be setting up. Also, I was able to attend the high school graduation, and I was very impressed with the overall presentation. It looks like about 61 of our students in high school graduated with honors, and it was just a fabulous presentation. I was very pleased to be able to go.
Well, anything? No sir? We had the Memorial Day Parade. It was last Monday. Well attended. We had a lot of people there, a lot of people walking. Very good ceremonies. My thanks, thanks, special thanks to all the veterans that participated and served. Minutes for the 5:30 regular meeting. Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jackie on page six. I'm going to make that change from tires to ties. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, undo business. Correction. I would entertain a motion that the chairman or his desigued being signed the warrants for the week ending 5:31.
So moved.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. And the new business. Zooming right ahead. Is there a Bruins game tonight or something?
Yep, keep it up, keep moving.
Okay, first item is vote to approve a secondhand license for sporting goods treasures to be located at 64 East Main Street. Motion to approve? We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Is there Finnegan's available? Edmund or Valerie Finnegan available? Yes, there we go. So you're going to be selling small antiques?
Yes, we have. We've been there since 2005.
Okay, well you have Al Rulo in there as an antique?
Excuse me.
Side room. Okay. Anything you have to say about it, or?
Nope.
No? Bring money and spend a lot, right?
Cross our fingers.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Comments from the?
Motion.
Brad?
Chair?
Yes.
Brian, I was just wondering, where is this located?
64 East Main Street, just prior to Pratt Farm on the left hand.
Just before Pratt Farm? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Glad to have you here. We have a motion. For a request to appoint Steve, Steven Schofield as a special police officer. Steven retired.
Last week.
31st was his last day?
Exactly.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. We have a notice for a Bitterman Agreement dated May 20th, 2013, for Jeffrey B. and Diane Leach, 56 Thomas Street. Land is located. Registry of deed book is, I'm just dragging this out because we have to get to 7:30 somehow. Deed book is 16977, page 240, and this is for the septic system funding, financial assistance. For the sum of $9,725.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Now I'm going to vote on awarding S E R S G office supplies and invitation forbid for fiscal year 2014 and fiscal year 2015. And this is for W B Mason Company. Office supplies, we get a 76.52% off the prices, and for ink and toner cartridges, we're looking at 51.52% off the prices. You want to talk about this, Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, these are our regional bids that we get through Sursage, the Southeast Regional Services Group. And as you suggest, we have three different bids. The first is for office supplies and ink. The second is for paper, and that's for one year. The office supplies and ink is for two years. And then the DPW services again is for one year. Things like manhole frames, sewer manhole frames, catch basin frames, extension rings, pavement. And it also includes gasoline and diesel and fuel.
Okay, let's take these one at a time. So the first for office supplies and bids. I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and approval and a second. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Second is for the invitation forbid for the paper for fiscal year 2014.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The third is the DPW Supplies Invitation Forbid For Fiscal Year 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. They're getting kind of sleepy over here, aren't they? Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Next item. Vote to sign the Acceptance of Work Agreement for East Main Street Sewer Pump Station Renovation. Charlie, have all of the items in this pump house been thoroughly tested?
I believe so, otherwise we would be asking to sign this.
Motion to approve? Make a motion to sign the Acceptance of Work Agreement for the East Main Street Pump Station Renovation?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Charlie, would you just reconfirm that all, all the pieces in that?
Yeah, we won't, if for some reason it's not, we won't release this. Okay, we'll just hold on to it. But I believe it is because I know Dan was in touch with Todd, and I know they agreed to move this forward.
I'd just like, trust but verify.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item for discussion is to vote the summer meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen. And this indicates that we will be meeting on July 1st, July 15th, July 29th, August 12th, August 26th, and September 9th. It's a pleasure of the Board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment or questions?
Mr. Jeff?
Yes.
And as we do at least we've done since I've started here, if we need to meet for some other reason, we can meet on Monday on one of the off weeks or a Wednesday if something like that we need to.
Yep, yes, we have the ability of meeting anytime we have a need for it. This is just, brings our summer workload usually is rather slow, but if we need a meeting, we will have one. Any other comments or questions? Having a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. This time I'd like to hear from Mr. Quell. He's going to discuss the Plymouth County Commissioners meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Try not to ramble on too much. This was my first meeting, and because of that, it was quite an eye-opener in both a positive and a negative way. I think for most people, county government in the Commonwealth is kind of shrouded. We don't hear about it a lot. We don't read about it. I even challenge you to find a website covering your county government and what they do. So because a lot of selectmen who are in this meeting from different towns, the 27 different towns in a city that incorporate Plymouth County, they really started off the night just explaining what it is that Plymouth County does, what your money goes to pay for. So I've sort of provided, you know, first I'll start off with the revenue projections because I think that sort of, you know, illustrates what it, what really goes on and where they get their money. Most notably, what the county does is registry of deeds excise, they collect certain fees that people must file. Pretty much just how people prove ownership. That's the number one thing that generates revenue for them. There are other things that they do that generate revenue. We do, the county does run and rent out three buildings to the state for courthouses. I believe they're in Hingham, Wareham, and Brockton. They do collect a little bit in parking fees. They do control and rent the building for the district attorney, provide a building for them. Beyond that, it's kind of here and there. I think the, the rest of the night was going over two things primarily. It was a budget, and it was some pay raises, which brought a lot of people out of the woodwork. First of all, what I've done just to sort of simplify it for you is, is I just kind of gave you the two pieces that I felt were, you know, sort of the meat and potatoes of all. I've given you a breakdown of their revenue projections for fiscal year 14 that we're going into. I've also gone ahead and given you the projected revenue and the forecasted expenses for the county. And as you can see, you know, where they end up. This in fact is the Plymouth County operating budget. Okay, and I will, I'm going to leave all this in the town manager's office for you to cruise through. This really is almost a historical piece of property here. As I said, the meeting started off very interesting. We all understand from a municipal standpoint that, you know, coming up with budgets is what we do. From the town manager to department heads to the finance committee, I mean, we're constantly scrutinizing over every dollar and accounting for every dollar and forecasting as best we can to ensure that we operate on a balanced budget. Interestingly enough, when it came to the, at least the county of Plymouth, that's not really something that they did at all. They were pretty much to certify receipts at the end of the year, and then the question came up, well, how do you know what you spent? And they said, well, we pretty much would figure that out at the end of the year too. So it was something that obviously wasn't going to go on forever. They had to do something about it. Not to mention that as the chairman had pointed out, over a decade, they had not even done audits. So I was really kind of nervous, you know, about some of this stuff. I don't, I didn't even know this stuff was legal. I was just sort of nervous just being in the room. But as the night progressed though, things got a lot more positive, and they really talked about things that were going on as far as the treasurer's office, the register's office, the new commissioners that have been elected. They're really starting to get some control of this. They have gone outside and hired a private audit company to get caught up on the audits. They've done 2006, 7, 8, and 9, and they're hoping to be at 2012 by the end of the year. So it won't be quite caught up. They are starting to really look hard at their revenue sources and actually try to get more conservative about them. It's still sort of in its infancy. I think that just that, that night that I was there, we pointed out certain problems with their revenue projections. And, you know, what kind of backup plan they had if some, some of these revenue projections didn't come to fruition, which we struggle with in the town here all the time. I mean, it could be something as simple as a courthouse closing, which if I'm not mistaken, was actually discussed early in the year about possibly closing a courthouse. So you can see they collect close to, you know, $1.6 million in rent. Well, close one of those courthouses, that's a pretty big hit. They had some things on here for revenue projections that don't even exist anymore, like their administrative building. They were collecting $75,000. Well, they don't collect that anymore, but they have it on their projections because the person, the company that built the building is now occupying the building. So they're not going to pay rent on something they've built. And some of these other things that, you know, I questioned. But if you go by their projections, this being the treasurer, they're going to finish the year, if all goes well, about $50,000 in the red. So, you know, I'll let you mill over that. They did talk a lot about the reason they're not able to generate more revenue for the county. I don't have to convince you all that the state can be kind of a bully when it comes to taking their piece of the pie, even when they, you know, when you're the one that does the lion's share of the work. It's not much different for the Commonwealth. For instance, the courthouses, even though the county owns the courthouse and rents it out to the state, the state gets to dictate what rent it's going to pay, and the state still only pays 80 cents on the dollar. So it gets to sort of occupy a building for a lot cheaper. You know, there are courthouses that are privately owned and rented out to the state, and they make three times as much on their rent. So they have a piece of legislation, and I do have a copy of all this legislation right here, and how it breaks down by state reps. But they are starting to actually go to Beacon Hill and try to put this stuff before the legislature to try to get this stuff fixed so they can start taking in more, you know, the fair value rent on their property. Another thing is the registry of deeds, which takes in just over $4 million, hopefully in 2014. Again, the state gets to set rates, and then it takes about 55% of every dollar goes directly into the state's general fund. And then what's left over goes to the county, but then even about 75% of that has to go to certain things that the state dictates. The states, the county still takes on a lot of retirement liability that's left over from the sheriff's department. Even though the sheriff's department now is pretty much just an entity of the state, a lot of those retirees that retired the first couple of years prior to them actually going into the state, the county held on to their retirement and the liability there. So they're trying to get that changed, which will free up some money. The same thing goes with deeds excise. They want to be able to go back, you know, the county receives about 42.5% of every dollar that's taken. The rest goes to the state. So they're really trying to push some legislation through that allows for counties to, to collect more of this for themselves since they're the ones actually doing it. If that happens, then it's possible that at some point in the near future, the county will be able to operate in the black, which is something that's important because they really, unlike all the towns, they don't have emergency funds. They don't, they don't have something they can dip into on a rainy day. They just don't. They've been operating in the red for so long. And then that puts, of course, more pressure on towns who pay into the county, as we all know. I think we just paid one of our bills on just shy of $6 million. So, you know, we're never going to see any relief until they find a way to operate in the, in the black, excuse me. So that's kind of where they are right there. Of course, then it got interesting where there were some pay increases that were, that went to vote. The first started with the registrar and the treasurer. They, the executive board had already voted to award them $7,500 pay increase to each one of them, which I wasn't crazy about. It got voted, so now the register, the register makes over $117,000 a year in salary for the county. The county treasurer now makes about $123,500 a year. Not a bad paying job. A lot, now that was one, that was first order business. The second one was the commissioners. There's three commissioners. Apparently, back up until 2009, they got a salary of $28,000, each one of them. Then the economy tanked, combined on, combined by the fact that the budget in the county was a mess, and the commissioners had no idea what they were doing. So the executive board decided to slash their pay from $28,000 down to $7,500. Now things are, I guess, in their, in their view, things are going in the right direction. They have some commissioners. They're actually putting some real sweat equity into the job. They're going up to Beacon Hill with the treasurer and actually pushing a lot of legislation. And they decided they wanted to start working their pay back up to where it used to be, $28,000. So they showed a slide of some commissioners in the other counties, Norfolk County, Suffolk County. Their commissioners make around $35,000, $40,000 a year as a salary. But other counties, as you would expect, like Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket, they get paid nothing. One commissioner did get up and made a passionate speech about how much out-of-pocket expense he's having to expend in doing his job as a commissioner, not to mention he's having to do this during business hours. I was honestly the only selectman from any town that actually stood up and talked against this. And it wasn't that I didn't understand out-of-pocket expenses, okay? It isn't that I didn't understand that these commissioners are doing a lot better job than the last ones. I just didn't under, I didn't agree with the reasoning behind it. What you're, I didn't like the precedence they were establishing of like performance-based pay. If you like the job they're doing, slash their pay. If you like the job they're doing, raise their pay. That's not pay. That's like, that's like a bonus. It's like commission. You know, come up with what you think you can live with in your budget, and then as far as the out-of-pocket expenses, you have to create a line item so that these guys can submit receipts and get reimbursed. Well, you can't do that if you keep operating in the red. So I said, don't put the cart before the horse. First come up with a way to become profitable where you can actually maybe certify some spare cash, and then use it to maybe reimburse some commissioners for whatever receipts they submit and go before review, but they're not doing that. So I was outvoted. Interestingly enough, you're not, each vote does not count equally. Your vote is weighted based on Your vote is weighted based on the assessed value of the property. So I think I was one of six that voted against it, the rest voted for it. The final vote came down to forty-five, four thirty-one against. So the commissioners all got a bump in pay as well. And their goal is to get back up somewhere to twenty-eight, thirty thousand dollars a year. I'll be there to speak about that when it comes up. So those are the things that happened. They quickly kind of ended the meeting. They didn't really give other folks a chance to speak, but, you know, more to come. But, you know, here's the budget. I mean, I guess the things are going sort of in the right direction, but I think my concern for them is they're basing a budget on things that are still very shaky. I mean, I don't think it's one or two things could not go their way, whether legislation gets changed or it doesn't get passed at all, like I say, a courthouse gets closed and boom, you're back to major deficit. So that's my concern. I'll keep an eye on it. I'll keep briefing you as we go, Mr. Chair. At this point, I'll subject myself to any questions that the board has or any concerns for that matter.
Members have any questions?
When's the next meeting?
Haven't scheduled it yet. Yeah, it's interesting. They closed the meeting without scheduling another one. Another one that, huh. But I know that our executive assistant here will keep me apprised as soon as she hears. But, you know, as Charlie pointed out, it could be next month, it could be two or three months from now. It's not, we'll see, especially going into the summer months.
Yeah, probably we'll meet in the summertime. I had asked them at our last, the last meeting I was at, they had talked about these different laws or bills that they had going through. And I said that I think it would behoove them to make all of the towns aware of these so that the towns could exert pressure on them, the various legislators, to try to get some action for the county. Whether or not they've done that, I imagine, I haven't seen any of the, anything pass through you, so.
Only one of the, there's six pieces of legislation that have been really put together by Plymouth County and only one of them's been heard on the floor. So they still have a long way to go. But they're all right here for your review. Again, I'm gonna leave all this with Charlie in his office. You can mill over it. It's got the house numbers on there. You can call your legislators. Each one of these, there's a real just kinda nuts and bolts synopsis of each one of them. But all of them are in favor of just trying to raise more revenue or give the county the ability to raise more revenue for what they do on a daily basis. And to be honest with you, it really is kind of just ridiculous how much the state takes for doing virtually nothing. I mean, they don't do any of the legwork to collect any of this stuff and yet it just goes into the state general fund and then it gets turned around and used for stuff that has nothing to do with the county. And, you know, it's, it's really sort of, you know, they've been using the counties as their cash cow for a while now, starting back in like two thousand and three. So look over it and let me know what you think. And there are, the state reps in our area are on here, the ones that sponsored it and co-sponsored the bills, okay?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Quell?
I'd just like to commend Selectman Quell for making the case of having them work within a budget that works in the black and not to just go automatically for pay raises, but as you said, to set up a system where they can get reimbursement for their actual expenses.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the commissioner that got up and spoke passionately on his own behalf, he wasn't talking about his lack of pay. He was complaining about his lack of out-of-pocket expenses. So that, you know, if that be the case, you're not addressing that by going from seventy-five hundred to fifteen thousand. He may still be spending more or less than that out of his pocket, I don't know. You don't know until you see receipts. So, yeah, I think they need, and also, you know, in the private sector, we base pay off two different things. Either you base your pay, you pay somebody based on what you can afford to pay them or you base pay based on what you think a position is worth. Usually, you start with what you can afford and then later on, if you have the money and you wanna give them raises and you wanna bump it up, then that's what you do. They sort of, like I say, they haven't even really seen, their budget's still in their infancy and you're giving seventy-five hundred dollar pay raises to five different people in one night. It's like, hold on. You're just now budgeting yourself. Let's not jump the gun here, okay? So, well, like I say, I'll keep an eye on it and keep you posted as we go further along. Anything else, Mr. Chair?
Do you have other comments?
Mr. Chairman? My name is Brian Jimmer. The question I had is, these commissioners, are they elected officials?
They're elected officials.
So these people ran for an office knowing that they were gonna get paid a salary of seventy-five hundred dollars and now came in, got elected, and now they're getting a doubling of their salary? I think we should triple your salary this evening. Zero times straight.
Wait a second.
But the funny thing is, is it'd be like you guys coming in after getting elected and saying, you know, I deserve a five thousand dollar a year stipend. It just doesn't seem right.
Well, you know, and I tried to make the point when I stood up as delicately as possible. I said, you know, let's not keep, let's keep in mind here, you're not exactly improving. What you're doing is you're making up for all the disaster that went over. This is damage control. You know, where was all this ten years? I don't know. I mean, I don't know who was driving the ship here, but everything just steered off course and now you're trying to fix what fell apart. That's kinda your job to do. You know, if people had been doing this stuff all along, who knows where we'd be as far as salaries is concerned, but, you know, you're having to work extra hard and do a great job because your predecessors did such a lousy job. I get that. So, and I kinda, as Mr. Jiminy points out, you knew coming on to this job, you're inheriting, you're running for a position, basically you're inheriting a mess. And then once you got it, you're like, well, now it's, it's hard just like I thought it would be and I want more money for it.
Mr. Quell? Mr. Chair? Who's on the advisory board?
The advisory board is made up of seven. The chairs from, these are all selectmen.
The advisory board?
Oh, I'm sorry, the advisory board, I'm, the executive advisory board is about, is it seven? I believe it's like about seven representatives, selectmen from different towns. Right now, it's being chaired by a selectman from Norwell. The advisory board itself is twenty-seven. I mean, it's twenty-seven communities all having a pointy, all pretty much selectmen.
But wasn't it the advisory board that decided to come up with these pay increases?
It's, as it was explained to me, 'cause I wasn't on it yet, no. It started with the executive board that then went to the treasurer to see if they could find the money somewhere. He said yes. They voted for it in executive session and now it was coming before the advisory board for the first time. No, this was the first time it came before the board as a whole.
Comments? Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll put your paperwork on file with Jackie and keep that in the selectmen's office. I'm sure people would be charging through tonight to read that. All right, seven-thirty. We now have a hearing to be held in the Board of Selectmen on Monday, June third, two thousand thirteen, at seven-thirty P.M. Selectmen's Meeting Room at the Town Hall located at ten Nickerson Ave., Middleborough, Mass. For the purpose of discussing the application made by the John F. Glass, VFW Post two-one-eight-eight Inc. after an alteration of premises on an all-alcohol beverage club liquor license property located at twelve Station Street, Middleborough, Mass. Assessors mapped fifty N lot five-nine-seven-four, Middleborough, Mass. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Meeting, sir?
Sir, my name is William Blight. I'm the quartermaster post of VFW Post twenty-one-eight-eight. I have a prepared statement I'd like to read. Take about ninety seconds.
Have you turned in the green cards?
Yes, I did. Okay, over the past year or so since this process started, there's been a lot of poor publicity out there, at least from our perception of it. The publicity hasn't been bad. So the VFW members have asked me to read this prepared statement, put together and read. Members of the VFW are very concerned about many of the negative things said and printed about the VFW last year and have asked me to tell you what the Middleborough VFW is all about. We are a not-for-profit organization. Every penny we take in that is not used for maintenance or betterment to our facility goes directly back into our community. All of us are unpaid volunteers who are in this for nothing more than the good feeling we get for helping those who need our help. Among our present rank are several holders of the Silver Star and Bronze Star. These medals represent valor on the battlefield. We have dozens of holders of Purple Hearts received for wounds sustained during battle. We have several members who fought in two or more wars. Those of our members who are not overseas wartime veterans are related to overseas wartime veterans. In our club membership, we have retired state policemen and Middleborough policemen and firemen and FBI agents. We have retired business executives and blue collar workers and small business owners. We have electricians and plumbers and construction workers and bankers and bureaucrats and schoolteachers and even a used car salesman. The average age for our membership is around sixty. That's for the men, all the women are twenty-nine. Many, if not most of our members are parents of adult children and also grandparents and even great-grandparents. Although we have members in good standing who have motorcycles, we are not a bikers club. Although many of, any of us can slip with a bad word here or there, we do not condone the excessive use of profanity. We have death on drugs. Drugs destroy families and we have, will have the cops on a suspected druggie faster than a spidey can catch a fly. On most nights, you can hear a pin drop in our parking lot, even on Friday nights when we have a band or a DJ. There are no wild parties in the parking lot after the day or at the end of the night. According to the Middleborough Police, the last complaint they had about the VFW was in September of two thousand and ten from a concerned mother. There are few complaints because we police ourselves. We are here tonight because for our own recreational purposes, we want to extend our liquor license to cover a small part of the adjacent ball field. We are members of a family and community-based organization who want to serve our families and community by having a place outside where we and our families can congregate and do those things families like to do. Talk about our families and our lives, listen to the Red Sox play ball and maybe play horseshoes ourselves while having a cold beer and maybe watching our green kids play on the field. We plan to use the ball field from about nine-thirty at ten A.M. to dusk during the warm weather season. We expect that the loudest sound most often heard will be the boombox giving the baseball game play-by-play or maybe from the horseshoes hitting the stakes or from our green kids playing in the field. The VFW and I thank you, the Selectmen, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. So what you're looking for is you wanna amend the liquor license to include a twenty-foot by sixty-foot patio area and a twenty-foot by sixty-foot horseshoe area. Is that correct? The health department has no concerns. The, well, Whalen is only concerned about two things and that's no eventual stop before dawn and all eventual end before dusk and the screening shall be provided on the residential portion of the former Little League baseball field. What kind of screening do you intend on putting up there?
We have, if it's not completely done, it's almost all done, slats going into the fence, those plastic slats that you put on the fence to create a privacy area. We had a large crew doing that last Thursday. I know they ran into some problems with bushes going through the fence and we didn't do that. We'll probably take care of that over time, take care of it individually, clear it up a little bit at a time with some spray and remove the bushes and then drop slats in. We have plenty of slats to take care of that with.
This area that you're going to have, the patio and the horseshoe pit, is right next to the driveway?
Correct.
So you're gonna be coming out about a hundred feet from the driveway?
Oh, no, no. It's adjacent to the building. From the building to the patio area, maybe ten feet from the building on the other side of the driveway.
What about the horseshoe pit?
And the horseshoe is the other side of that.
So how far into the baseball field area are you gonna go?
Forty-three feet.
I think one of the concerns that I remember from last year was how you're gonna police this from the point of view of people not wanting to be taking their drinks over to the fence line, being considered over the distance away from the horseshoe pit area.
We have two ways. Number one, self-police. And number two, we have cameras, outside cameras on that area. As time goes along, we're planning on expanding those cameras, but we have, we'd invite anybody here to go down and take a look. We have plenty of cameras with a biotechnical watchroom or the, or the bar manager. I can see everything that's going on in that part of the field.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Blake, it's, there are notes here on your plans that say it's gonna be roped-in area?
Ah, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna drive stakes in and drive, like you buy the story, just drive the stakes and we're gonna rope around it. On the horseshoe area, we're gonna have hurricane fence around it.
Like orange stuff?
Yes. It's cheap. It's about thirty-four dollars for a fifty-foot length or something like that. And we're just gonna wrap it around that so we can still enjoy horseshoes without worrying about the safety of others.
So you'd have to jump over these ropes to get up in the field?
Oh, no, we're gonna have openings there. Areas like thirty-six inches wide where a person can walk in and have easy access.
Charlie, you have anything else?
No, I believe they did what we asked them to do, which is create a defined area and, you know, keep the alcohol beverages within that area.
No, Mr. Quell was mentioning a little earlier tonight about how the state will sometimes exercise their power and they have done that yet again. Jackie, this is relative to the D O R certifications from the Department of Revenue.
Right, that's correct.
And now the applicant has to get a receipt from the D O R that their taxes are cleared as opposed to that going through the state.
Certificate of good standing, which Mr. Blight has explained to me tonight that he is in the process of working on. And I've explained to him that I will need that confirmation once he gets it so that I can send it with this application to A B C C. It's part of the application requirement by the state. So if you approve it tonight, I really can't send this in without it anyway. He'll send it back to me. So the board will need to vote, subject to me receiving that certificate of good standing.
That's no penalty on you, that's just the state.
It's bureaucracy. I tried using the web, I tried calling in. It's just like talking to the phone company or Comcast. You know, you get bounced all, after the phone finishes ringing, two hours later, you get bounced all over the place. So in my frustration, I just turned back to the old-fashioned, that's a paper form, it's in the mail as we speak. So whatever amount of time it takes, but it's there, we've done it.
Well, hopefully they'll respond quickly, more quickly than they did to your phone calls, let's put it that way, hopefully. Okay, I think one of the issues that was from last year was also the fact that there was, seemed to be some convoluted organizational structure in your, in the operation, but you've got that all lined out now.
Correct.
Everything's all squared away there. It meets all the satisfactory of your, up, uh...
I have a package here that discusses the state law, all the steps we've taken, everything else. If you need anything, we'd be happy to follow through on that.
Give you whatever you want. I believe Charlie, you've been through that already. It's all squared away, that's, my concern wasn't to penalize in any way, shape, or form, it's just, we gotta make sure that things are, things are squared away.
We have to play the game, I understand that. Yes, we'll see in our, we're having a meeting with our district next, next Monday and at that time we will, we'll have everything straightened out for that part of it. I'll make sure that Jackie gets it.
My board members have any questions?
Mr. Chair? A quick question about the screening, the green slats that you're going to put in, is that sufficient as far as the building inspector? Have you checked that with him just to make sure?
Yeah, that's one of the things that they, they gave us a number of options. That was one of them.
All right, just wanted, great, that's it?
Good. Any other questions? Questions or comments from the board, from the audience rather, excuse me? Hearing done. Close the hearing. The hearing's closed. Entertain the motion from the board.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Quell?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant the alteration of premises liquor license to the John F. Glass VFW Post two-one-eight-eight.
Second.
Motion and a second. We have to include in that motion...
Subject to receipt of the...
Subject to receipt of... Subject to receipt of the certificate in good standing by the Selectman's Office.
Right.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, town managers report?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, one of the items we discussed recently was lighting at the grade crossings in regards to the Cape Flyer service, and you did get an email from Mr. Montbert, his own observation of Miller Street, saying that you could see the sign. We did have a report, though, from, actually, the construction manager for the project from the MBTA calling to say that two streetlights at the spruce intersection were both out, and asked that we contact the GNE, which I did, and Mr. Taylor took care of that almost immediately, so those lights are now again in service, so I think we have, we vote for people to see those signs.
Charlie, have they rectified the situations with the great gate crossings, where the train is in the middle of the crossing, arms go up?
I have not heard, you know, definitive confirmation that they have. I was told that they were working on it, you know, late last week when we first reported it to them, but no one got back to me to say that they had actually fixed it, and I'm not sure at what speed they rode, they operated the trains this past weekend. I know the first weekend, they did not operate at the higher speeds because of several concerns, so I will, I will find out this week and see where that is. They were taking it very seriously. They realized that one of the primary reasons they did not operate at the higher speeds were the fact that they hadn't re-timed the signals to factor into higher speeds, now because they have to give people a certain amount of notice before the trains get to the crossing, and they hadn't yet recalibrated those, those signals to give that, that warning at the appropriate time. So they were going to have to be down there anyway, working on, on that whole system, including the, the arms of the gate, so.
Seems to me that the lights should come on, start flashing...
First.
And then you have this small delay, and then the arms should come down.
Exactly.
Shouldn't kind of drop on you. I wouldn't think that would be... But then it is Federal Railroad Administration, so who knows? Whatever they think is good, I guess.
Certainly, the arms shouldn't go up before the train is completely...
Well, I get, I guess they must think if you're stupid enough to run into the train, well, there's not much you can do here, right?
Yeah.
People drive into ponds because the GPS tells them to go there. Don't put a pass on them.
But I will, I will get in touch with them and confirm and find out just, you know, where they are with that situation.
Okay. Questions?
Chair?
Yes?
I went down last Saturday, I think John was down there last Friday. And yeah, the, the train was just, it was about fifteen seconds away when the light finally went on, and then the arms started coming down, and I can only imagine a newer and nervous driver, panicking, as they see a train coming, and the lights go down, and the arms come down, and just putting the brakes on it. Wasn't, I wasn't impressed when I saw it last Saturday. I contacted all of our reps, Rep. Oral, Rep. Falter, and Rep. Gifford, and I've heard back from all of them. Rep. Gifford, who is her district, she said she was going to try to make it down there this weekend and see if, I didn't get down there this weekend, so I don't know what it was like this weekend, but the long and short of it seems to be that the DOT is going to do what they want to do. So I don't know, I mean, I've done, I think, all, all that I can contacting our reps, sort of planning a protest, which I'm open to, but I am open to that also, but, I mean, I'm going to still...
Wait till we get the new, the new police station.
I, I'm still in correspondence with Tom Falter's office. I got an email from them, their office today, and they're still trying to get some answers for us, so we are working on it, but it's just, it's tough when they don't answer the emails and the phone calls.
It just seems peculiar that the young lady was very interested in the safety, and that nothing was going to happen unless this was perfectly safe.
Well, nothing was, the speed, the speed wasn't going to go up unless it was safe to their stadium, and it wasn't the first weekend, I don't know if it was this past weekend, we'll find out. We did, we did send your, copies of your letters to the other communities that are going to experience the same higher speeds, Born, Wareham, and Rochester, asking them to take some action if they agree.
And in a ironic, sad story, on May 21st, a man was brutally struck by an empty commuter rail train in Brockton just after 2:00 p.m. Just that, I think it was like the day after, you got a discussion about the safety measures that are in place.
That's broad daylight.
2:00 p.m.
Anything else to the town manager? In that case, when the correspondence?
I, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I just, it seems only proper that the DOT or somebody should come back in here and give us sort of an after-action review after all these things are finally solved and put in place. It's the least they could do, honestly.
Well, we did, we did ask them for a copy of their risk analysis, and they did agree to give that to Rochester as well. I haven't seen it yet. We'll follow up on that, too, and see.
You know, you can't, you can't question, you know, you can't ask questions to a risk analysis. I mean, I really like a warm body in here to say, okay, this is the things that you said you would do, these are the problems we've already seen. By that time, I'd expect that they would be fixed, and I just think, to say, the least they could do is come in here and give us a final analysis to assure us that they're ready to go, because this thing's going to start ripping through here at 55. Arms are going up, lights aren't coming on, I mean, you know, it's just, it's an old track, you know? They're having their problems, and they're trying to fix them, but I mean, I just don't understand, I would, I would expect it. I would expect them to come in here before that thing starts going through at top speed on a regular run, that they can show us all the things that they've done. It's my, you know, it's just my two cents, but it's my expectation that they would do that. Don't know about the rest of the board?
We, we can always add...
Item?
Sure. Correspondents? Mr. Nolan?
Yes, sir. Hold it back up here. Item number one, Taunton River Watershed Alliance is having a canoe trip down the Taunton River. I'm going to try my best to be there. For more information, you can call 508-828-1101. On a Saturday, it's going to be a great day, I think. That was the only thing I wanted to...
That's it?
Yep.
Mr. Quell?
Just a couple of things you can bear with me, and it will be brief. There was a glowing letter from Epsilon Associates, Nashbuwampanag Tribe Casino in Taun, you know, they keep talking about jobs and revenue for surrounding businesses, and I haven't seen anything contractually that guarantees any percentage of jobs to local residents or a percentage of the construction to local contractors, just a possibility, so I hope that's enough. I think that historically, when you look at the other Indian gaming casinos that were built in New England, I would challenge that a majority of the jobs did not go to residents that were already living in that area, nor did the majority of construction go to local contractors, so we'll see how that pans out, but, probably already covered that. We did get a letter from a member of our GNE that did go down and take a look at these crossings, he, you know, he did see that there's some, you know, the lights are dim in his, his opinion, and yes, you can see the signs, but, you know, it didn't seem like he was thrilled with what he saw down there, so, you know, there's definitely room for improvement at these crossings. As far as the notice we got on harm in law offices, notice of foreclosure, Charlie, we got a lean position on that?
Apparently, we do.
And what is it?
We, we sent that to Judy, and she's aware of it.
First, second, third?
No, I, I don't know, actually.
Okay.
I think it was the second, better.
Seconds, far from first, okay, well, we just, maybe just find out, to see what's going to happen here, what are we getting on this? And there was some correspondence, just sort of general correspondence concerning the earth-removal permit inspections. I just want to disclose to the board, I did have a citizen deliver to my front door a concern about a particular earth-removal permit. I have brought it to both Jackie and Charlie's attention. I'm not sure if any of the rest of you have got it, so I'm really just disclosing to you that I got this delivered to my door, hand-delivered to my door, and then I got two voicemails on my home phone behind it. It deals with one of the permits. I know that the town manager and Jackie are looking into this, and I'm pretty sure by next meeting, they'll have some answers to this particular citizen's question, so I'll just leave it at that, because it wasn't officially a part of correspondence. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, about Mr. Montepurt, I was actually with him looking at the train, imagine that, at the sign, the signage, and I had a concern because you can really only see it from one side, so if your car breaks down and you're on one side of the railroad tracks, you'd have to go around towards the tracks, but again, as Alan said, the DOT is going to do what they want. That, that was my concern. I pulled up, and if I had broken down on the side that I pulled up, I would have to get up and go and walk between the tracks and the sign to try and find it, so that was a little concern with that. On a good note, on number three, on the, the Senate did add 1.25 million dollars to the McKinley vento mandate for reimbursement for transportation services to homeless students to schools outside the local school district. I did some checking, and that means we are going to get 95% reimbursement at this point for that. That's on a good note. And one other thing on number eight, the financing for High Point that came through, do we have someone in contact with them, working with them, finding out what's going on?
Actually, we have a meeting with them this week. Mr. Mombert, I asked him to come in and, you know, bring us up to date, and I would hope that he would come before you fairly soon and do the same thing.
Okay. I just want to make sure. That's all.
Very good.
That's it, for me.
Mr. Quell?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what Mr. Nolan said, the Taunton River Watershed Alliance is having their June 22nd canoe trip. It's either June 21st or June 22nd, it's the longest day of the year, so that's a good day to be on the river. Any day is a good day to be on the river, but that one's a particularly good day. Plymouth County Extension 4H sent invitations for their June 29th expo at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Or is that, that's in the somewhere?
10:05.
Can't find these things on, put them through or not. But, so that's our June 29th.
There you go.
And what else? Yeah, the, we have the, item number 11, we have the CD from Epsilon Associates regarding the Nashbuwampanag Tribe and Unicorn Park that's going to be built in Taun. That's on file in the office, it's on the bar, we'll take a look at it.
It's filed on the unicorn?
Yeah. It's all going to happen, going to happen.
Yep.
That's about it for me.
Okay, thank you. Relative to the item seven, the Miller Street train crossing lighting, on the, one of the first mornings of the tests, of the runs, I, on the scanner, I heard that the fire, the captain on the fire department who was at the crossing, he notified Fire Command to contact the train, the train company to let him know about the problem, and the phone number that the fire station had, it was a voicemail. So I'm kind of praying that's about the number that's on the box, so if somebody had a problem and they dialed this number to say, my car is on the tracks, and say, thank you, we'll get back to you next year or something, it's, you know, it's not a good thing. Presuming that that number on the side of the box goes to a real-life, honest-to-god person.
We'll, we'll make sure of that.
I would hope.
I mean, they should have went to their dispatch, I can't imagine it would have gone to voicemail, so probably what the fire department had would be different numbers.
Maybe we should get them, make sure they have the right number, so in case they get a call from somebody panicking, that we don't have a disaster. Okay, so ends correspondence. Going to make three motions now to go into executive session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager, not to return to open session. Some move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hold up. Mr. Nolan?
Aye.
Mr. Farrow?
Aye.
Mr. Guppi?
Aye.
And Mr. Quell?
Aye.
And the chairman votes aye. Second motion, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property. The chair declares that an open meeting discussion may have detrimental effect on the negotiation position of this body, not to return to open session. Some move?
Second.
Hold up. Mr. Nolan?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. In motion number three, move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. The chair declares that an open meeting discussion may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board. Some move? Not to return to open session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nolan?
Aye.
Mr. Farrow?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Quell? And the chair votes aye. We're now in executive session. Thank you very much. Good night.